That is no longer my high school, is no longer happening in a lot of other sites. All the beautiful old eight-story department stores are gone. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have two minutes.
From St. Louis.
Want to hear what?
Dogs. I flew out to St. Louis to get my dog there and then visited the whole place while I was there. It was fun.
Yeah. They have an amazing museum there and they have the 1904 World's Fair whole exhibit and that is really a fun. I go every time just to see it and just that part and some of it. And the art museum is amazing, too. So we're waiting for, I get to meet our new member of our council because I'm not sure I've ever met her.
Yeah, me, too. I'm excited.
Yeah, it doesn't take much, does it? To get excited. I'm ex, Dale's been an inspiration to me, so I'm good to see him here.
Taking down the Christmas lights is like the most social activity I'm doing in a long time.
Yes. Yeah, well, I go to the bank. Yesterday, I went to Taco Bell and the drive-through car wash. That was my big social event, the drive-through car wash.
Hi, Ellen. Welcome. I see you there now.
She's muted.
Good morning. Good morning.
Hello there, Ellen.
Hi.
Ellen, we met out in front of City Hall, didn't we?
We did when I was going in to have my interview with the mayor and vice mayor.
And I told you, you were well-qualified and you had nothing to worry about, didn't I?
Thank you. Maybe I was worried because it might come true.
There you go.
Just joking. Really glad to be with you guys.
Well, I saw John log on. I don't see John.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are.
Hi, everybody.
So.
Hi, Ellen. Nice to see you over the computer.
So it's 9:30. I think we're all here. So Leslie, would you like to start with a roll call, please?
Linda Calafiore.
Present.
Donna Jet. Ellen Martin.
Present.
John Mysick.
Present.
Judy Rifuerzo.
Here.
Thank you all present and just a reminder to mute when you're not speaking.
Okay, next is public appearances for anything that is not going to appear on today's agenda. You have three minutes. So I see some people here who might want to speak to something. I see Nancy, Dale. Anyone like to go ahead? Anybody have any public comments?
Sure, I will. This is Nancy.
Hi, Nancy.
Folks, Happy New Year-ish, whatever it is this year. Anyway, I did want to mention that CRA does have a Zoom event coming up on the 28th of January, so it's a few weeks away. But it's Stephen Moore presenting on the Carmel Historic Theater District, so covering history way back into the early 1920s and all the way up through to current. So it should be a really good program and of interest to anyone and everyone. And the information to link on to that is on the Carmelresidents.org website. So just wanted to call that out for anybody who wanted to join in or share that information with others that they know. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. That should be an interesting presentation.
Dale has his hand up.
Oh, I can't see, I don't see Dale at all. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dale. Dale, you're muted. We can't hear you. Is Dale still trying to? Yeah, he's still trying to unmute, but we can't, we can't hear him right now. Okay, he's gonna go out and come back in. So why don't we go on to announcements and we can come back to public appearances? Okay, so we'll go through announcements and our first announcement is welcome Ellen Martin to our group. We're so happy to have you. We haven't had a full commission in, gosh, six, a long time, really long time. So we're all very, very grateful to have you here. Would you like to tell us anything about your history? So give us a little brief, you know, intro.
Thanks. And yeah, I'm really delighted and proud to be part of your group. I think that your last meeting, it was maybe Ashley that went through my bio, but I'm currently the Executive Director of First Night Monterey. I've been with First Night for 15 years now. I can't believe it. And I currently serve on the Board of the Old Monterey Foundation where we are working on the historic Presidio Park, Lower Park. And I'm also on the Concorse Executive Chair Committee and I've chaired the Retro Auto at Spanish Bay for, I don't even know how many years now. Concorse is changing and we hope that there will be something in some form this year. And so those are my commitments to the community. So I've lived in Carmel. I originally moved to Carmel in 95, is it 95? And I moved to Silicon Valley for a couple of years and worked in high-tech, doing events, large events, the largest HP computing conference in North America. I was the Program Marketing Manager. And then moved back here when the dot-com went dead. And so I've lived in Carmel for many years now. I love Carmel, so really, really, really glad to be part of this group. That's just a little bit about me. Thanks.
Thank you. What a great experience we're gonna have. That's great. Okay, announcements from commissioners. Would anybody like to make any announcements? Quiet group this morning at the beginning of the year. I don't have any announcements either. Ashley, announcements from staff?
I think my announcements will come during future agenda items when we talk about strategic planning because we'll be doing our, it's the two-year anniversary of our strategic plan, which has gone really well. I'm excited to look at that in February and then also to talk about leadership Carmel's offer to support us in endeavors going forward. So we'll cover that under future agenda items.
Okay, great. So shall we try Dale again? Has he come back on?
We still can't hear him.
He's got a green light now, but I don't hear him.
Yeah. Can you type us, to us in the comments box? It's up top and it looks like a little chat wizard and. That sounds good, yes. If you call in with the telephone, we can do it at the end of the meeting once we've run through the business before we do future agenda items. Perfect. Thank you, Dale.
All right. So approval of orders of business, approval of the minutes for the December 8 regular meeting?
I'll move to approve the minutes for the December meeting.
I'll second it.
Calafiore.
Yes.
Jet.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
But she wasn't here, so we'll just put it changed. Mysick.
Yes.
Rifuerzo.
Yes.
Approved. Thank you.
All right. Well, it's that time again for the annual election of officers. So who would like to be chair?
Well, I would like to nominate our current team to continue another year. Did I say that right in the form of a motion?
I think you did. Donna has her hand up, too.
I second the nomination.
Works for me.
Works for me. Okay. Anyone else want to weigh in on?
No, I just, I want to make note as a matter of order, we moved doing this to December, but because we did not have a full commission, we held this over until January. So next year, we will get back to doing it in December again.
Thank you, Ashley, for clarifying that. Yes. Okay, so shall we take a vote then?
Calafiore.
Yes.
Jet.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mysick.
Yes.
Rifuerzo.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Receive an action, an after-action report on the lights by the Sea Holiday Campaign, so we should have a lot to talk about here. Ashley?
Yeah, we should, we should have a lot to talk about here. So this was, as you all know, an unusual year for us in terms of community activities, events. And I have to say, I'm so proud of everybody here on this commission for being creative and thinking outside of the box in order to bring our community together. We started that off with the Pumpkins on Parade campaign where we put some lights up in the park. We did a pumpkin giveaway in partnership with Carmel Gives. That was well-received by the community and we did a little kind of PR campaign around that. And that was, you know, with the leadership of our ad hoc committee, Linda and Donna. And so John and Judy, who were the ad hoc committee for the Lights by the Sea campaign, took what they'd done and built on that. What we did there was we, we did another giveaway at the farmer's market with poinsettias, which was lovely. I think the community loved that. But we also increased the number of lights that we had in the park and then down the Ocean Avenue medians. And that was done with the help of Meredith Knoll, who was the expert who helped install the uplighting on the Ocean Avenue medians, medians, which was a 20-year project, as some of you know. A lot of work went into that. She's also consulted on, I think, the streetlights project when they were replacing some of those bulbs for the wattage for those and how those would look. So she knows our community, knows Carmel well, and was able to help me, you know, order some lights at wholesale cost, which was great. We received some feedback from the community. I've got emails. I'm sure all of you saw pine cone, letters to the editor, people who were excited to see an increase in lights, others who had some thoughts about what the lights looked like. So we're here to take all comments about that today, typical to how we do after actions for our special events. So one of the things that I know I heard for Ocean Avenue was some feedback about the grape stakes that we used to hang the lights on those, because at nighttime, you can't really see them. You're focused on the lights, which are, those lights were the rainbow lights that were kind of retro. They look kind of 50s with the larger bulbs. Those are LED lights, so very low wattage, which is great because these are, these things are, you know, energy efficient. But is there something else we can use as an alternate to just using grape stakes? So I think that's a good thing for us to explore, you know, earlier in the year. Is there something that is? And this is, this goes along too with, hand in hand with a conversation that we've been having about Car Week for our after-action for keeping people out of the medians there. So we've been talking about using pigtails, which are very thin metal rods that twist and you'll see these down at the dunes, for instance, and they've got the cable ties before them, but they're very low-impact visually. So could we use something like that for the lights where it's very low-impact and not is, you know, just that piece of wood for the grape stake? So I think that was an excellent thing that came out of this. We did, I will make note that we, we, the holidays, like they do every year for everybody since the beginning of time and the holiday season, snuck up on us. And so we ordered lights and then we are short-staffed, so it was a rush and a crunch to get the lights up. And thanks to this commission for helping to support staff in doing that because it was a big deal to have all of you out in the park, helping us string lights and put ornaments up. So I think that was, that's a great idea. Got my pen here. Anybody else? Public comments? Commissioners who have ideas and thoughts about what we can do to make next year even better than we had this year?
So Ashley, should we go to public comments first and then bring it back to commissioners?
Or? I think that would be great, Judy.
Yes. Okay, so let's open it up to public comment. Wow.
So I'll chime in. This is Nancy. And, you know, as you know, Fred had made some opening comments to the, at the City Hall meeting in December, and that was not well-received, at least as it was intended. And as Ashley had represented, the request was to improve the daytime look and, you know, make sure that enough effort was put into that to enhance that daytime look. As the city itself and all of its businesses are highly touched on for what they can do and how they can do it, the work that happens inside, even though these are temporary initiatives, just needs to be critically, you know, considered. And I know everybody kind of gets that and, you know, we apologize for the, for the, the, okay, now I'm gonna use the, not quite the right words, but we didn't mean to, you know, be offensive to anyone who contributed to that effort. Because the, you know, the intentions were honorable and good and wonderful and appreciated. So, you know, that was, there was no doubt that that was a part of the communication that, that should have taken place. So I think enough said and again, we definitely appreciated the effort that went into that and just look to the daytime look to be enhanced in the future. So thank you very much and again, our apologies.
Thank you, Nancy. Oh, okay. Let's just wait, Linda and Donna, just for a second. Any other public comments and then we'll, we'll chime in. Yeah. Okay, I don't see any. Donna, do you want to go first?
Donna, you're muted.
I'll check it out. I want to particularly thank Leslie and Ashley and Cleve, who worked tirelessly. And I was extremely disappointed that a group who, who says they promote Carmel would criticize any effort at all. And I had friends say to me, why would anybody complain about Christmas lights? And it made Carmel look small for people to think that lights on any kind of a pole was ugly or distracting. So I am highly distressed that, and I did send information to our city manager and that these people have nothing better to do. They should be out congratulating Dale and his group or helping do that instead of being critical of Christmas lights. It certainly looks bad for the community. And this group has made every effort to encourage the community to come together at this time of year and particularly during this pandemic. So moving on, let's just hope people understand this is not a time to be critical, but a time to help. Thanks.
Thank you, Donna. Linda?
Well, I think I've expressed my concerns in writing to not all of you because I don't necessarily want to hit the, you know, everybody button. And I just wanted to say, I love the lights and I think Ashley's suggestion, which refreshed my memory, I don't even, I don't know what you talked about, the name of the pole.
The pigtails. I think there's another term for them, but I always remember pigtails because it's that little curl at the top.
I doubt I'll remember that, but yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. I love the colored lights on the median. The people that I ran into overheard and most of the people did not approach me as having anything to do with the selection. And I did not select median lights, but I love the median lights. Everyone that I overheard, including in the toilet of my health club where we outside exercise, were talking about how wonderful the lights were. So with that, I don't think we need to prolong that discussion on what the lights look like. But I had a question. The poinsettias that we handed out, I mean, I love the way that the booth looked, I mean, the signage, which was really great, but did we let people know that the poinsettias were being offered? Because I don't remember seeing, the pumpkins, we had a couple ads in the pine cone, and I don't remember the poinsettias being advertised in any way. Am I, did I miss it or?
You did not miss it. You did.
So did we choose not to advertise the poinsettia giveaway?
We, I, yes, we chose not to advertise the poinsettia giveaway. This was something quieter that we did just as a holiday bonus for the last week of the farmer's market before we shut down for two weeks.
And I, and I understand the cost, you know, ratio because, I mean, it's, it's very expensive to let people know. But I just think, you know, in the future, we need to, I mean, we don't necessarily need to take an expensive ad out in the pine cone, but I think more people would have been so receptive because people loved that and it looked great and people talked to me about their poinsettia was still living. I brought a couple to my neighbors here because I knew they wouldn't necessarily get down to the farmer's market and it was just lovely.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can do that definitely. If we do anything like that at the farmer's market again, make sure that we have gotten the word out.
Thank you. That's the end for me.
John?
Yeah, thanks, Judy. You know, I, I'd just like to say that I, too, thought it was a really special time of year for the city, you know, given everything going on in 2020. The opportunity to show my kids the park and have them, you know, tell their friends to go take a look. That was really cool and that's what this city's about. It's about this community and the families that are here, you know, our visitors. It looked beautiful. I thought the lights looked fantastic. I'm certainly open to finding ways to help make the median more attractive during the day, again, within reason, budget constraints. And Cleve worked tirelessly to put those up. So, you know, as long as the pigtails are something that we think he can execute on, given our limited staff, you know, I'd be supportive of that. You know, again, color of the lights, I thought was, it was beautiful. I think that's a great suggestion, Linda, on the poinsettias and advertising that before. It was so special to see people come up and they were surprised when they heard that they were free and, you know, it was really neat. Actually, we had a number of workers coming out of different restaurants or offices to come and get a poinsettia because they had heard that we were giving them away and it was, you know, they were so excited to kind of bring them back into their workplace and brighten it up. So I thought that was a great thing. You know, again, we are an open, you know, public commission where anyone from the city who wants to be involved can hear what we're doing, can suggest or come up with advice as we're, you know, planning out these types of events. And I urge them to do that. If anyone has a view, please share it with us. We're, you know, open to hearing it, but it's a lot better if we hear it ahead of time and if there are thoughts and ways, you know, whether it be the pigtails or whatnot, if there's another idea of a way to put those lights up. And if somebody wants to come forward, maybe they want to even sponsor them, you know, as long as this commission views that as a, as a, you know, a good decision, we're happy to consider it. So I, I just hope people get more involved. What I was so proud of was seeing the commissioners working with the city staff to put up these lights and again, you know, today, take them down. And so I hope that more people get involved. Anyone that's come to me and talked about it, I've said, hey, if you've got ideas or want to help us, we'd love it. And it's certainly a source of pride for me and my family to be involved and I hope other people, you know, feel that way as well and get involved.
Thank you, John. Yes, Ellen. Ellen wants to chime in.
Well, I just want to say that I thought it was really charming. And, you know, I love walking around the village at night because it looks completely different with the storefronts lit and the lights on. And I thought it was really cool how the lights started and went down, up, up, up the street to the tree. I think they were timed that way. And I thought that they looked really good. You know, as far as what held them, I think they were green wooden things, maybe. If they were just sprayed a black mat, so they just, you know, kind of blended into the environment. Or if you get those gray pigtails that are used on many, many events, maybe even spraying those a dark green or a dark black might help just having it blend in so it's the lights that everybody sees. But anyway, I thought it was a great job and a great addition to, you know, the weird new normal that we've gone through. So thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you, Ellen. So I'd like to say, I think, I think the staff did a great job. We all did a great job. I loved, I loved, one of the things, and I do get the, you know, during the day, how it looks and it's hard with any lights during the day. I think the town did a great job. It wasn't just the city. All the businesses came out. They had lights. Everybody tried to brighten the city, which was just wonderful. I think, and Ashley can correct me, I think the median lights, the one on the first median has always been that way and we just extended it down all of Ocean, which was good. I, I suggest we do that every year because it's so nice to have that much light going down there. But I don't, I think the way we strung them down the street was the way that they'd been on the center median for, I don't know how many years we've been lighting the center median and nobody ever complained about that. So that was a little shocking to me, but maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I, I've mis-thought about that the wrong way. So Ashley can tell me if I'm wrong. But it was, it was great. Everybody working together, bringing the city together. And the more lights, the better. And what was funny is, you know, John was just saying how we want everyone to come and help. And the day we were decorating the trees, these parents came with their little kids and Donna, they were helping Donna and I hang the ornaments on the, it was so cute. It was so fun. They were so excited, you know, that they got to help decorate the city. It was, it was just wonderful. So yeah, for people to come out and do that. And I know some other groups came and helped Cleve on the median, didn't they? I'm pretty sure they did. So anyway, Ashley, want to help me out?
Yeah, so Donna, Judy, you are sort of correct. The media, the lights have been going up in that first median of Ocean Avenue for probably the last five years. Part of that was a measure for decoration, but it was also to keep people from standing in the median to watch the program, coming over from Carmel Plaza so that we could corral people so that, because as you, as you know, from the north side down to the south side, it's a much, it's a much steeper drop and people don't realize it, so we don't want anybody to get hurt. So that just became a standard and it happened to be lovely. And so that's why we ended up extending that down. So I think that probably having a conversation in October prior to the holidays about and reviewing what we've done, where we've done it. I've got a lot of good photographs of the lights at night, thanks to Cleve. I've got a lot of good photographs of the lights at night, thanks to Cleve. And I think a discussion, again, about the pigtails, talking about what we can do with the lights in the daytime, especially if we take a look as we go around the park this after, or after this meeting to take lights and ornaments and things down, keep an eye out for what else we can add to this after action. So again, we just continue to refine this year after year. And Judy, as you said, I think it was really great because it wasn't, the whole point of this wasn't just that the city increased the lights that we had before. That was fun and nice and a good thing that we could do. But I, but it was getting the community involved. I mean, you all saw the Friday letters for the month of December. We had so many people send in photos of their houses that, and the decorations that they did in their yards, and they were so excited to share those. So it was, you know, yes, the business district, but also our residents who were excited to share those things. And it was, you know, John's house looked wonderful. It just, it was great to see all those photos come in to us in the community activities email. So.
One question. The pigtails are, by waiting till October, are there any other, I mean, I guess just hearing you earlier, are there other events or days or is there other purposing for the pigtails throughout the year that we should be thinking about when it comes to, you know, eliminating the ability to cross the median? Or is it okay to wait till October and think about it as like a, you know, more specific to the holiday lights?
I think that, that's an excellent question. And now that you bring it up, I think I mentioned, this was a discussion about the pigtails that I had had with the Public Works Director. We talked about it at this meeting, but I believe it also came up at a council meeting about keeping people off of the medians. You know, as I mentioned earlier, we spent 20 years trying to get the uplighting for the trees correct and having people cut through the medians or jump on the medians to look at cars during car week, messes those, that the specific placement of those lights up, not to mention, again, the risk of people hurting themselves, not realizing that it's a much steeper drop on one side of the median than the other. So the pigtails were considered for those. That may be something the city wants to keep up year round. So I'll start that. I've already got a list started for the poor Public Works Director. He's not going to want to pick up the phone if he's watching this meeting, of other things to talk to him about. So I'll add this to that list to talk about the pigtails and whether that's something we want to do year round. But I do think, John, to answer your question, that there is a multi-use function for these pigtails, not just for holiday lights.
Linda?
I'm a little confused about how we're keeping people off the median during normal, regular times. Do we have a, are we blocking the median or only for events like car week?
Only for events to ask them, yes, thank you, Nancy. There's different, Nancy says, there is a nascent effort underway to address the median and parting a permanent barrier that will go through all the normal reviews and approvals. Yes, that is correct. And that was one of the things that we had talked about. So for special events, but if something goes up permanently, this would need to go, you know, of course, to Public Works, but planning and building. And it would be, again, need to be something that's low impact visually to keep people off those medians because we do see trip and falls and things that happen because it's steeper on one side than another. There are a couple medians you'll see that have cut throughs through them. I think one of them's, the one, the one, the first one that comes to mind is the block between San Carlos and Dolores Street where Carmel Drug is. And there's a planter now in the middle of that pathway to try to discourage people from cutting through in the middle of that block, in the middle of traffic because it's a long block. So I will follow up on the Ocean Avenue medians, pigtails, where we are on process and budget and funding for all of that. But it's definitely something, if we can push forward on it and add the, so as an added, added level of importance, not only to keep people off of the medians, to support our special events, but also now the pigtails would be a good idea in order to minimize the daytime look and impact of any holiday lights that we put up. I think this would be another reason to push this forward. So I will keep tabs on that and add that to my list for the Public Works Director and planning and building and see where we are.
Thank you, Ashley. All right. So that's everyone's weighed in on the lights. Let's move on to the farmer's market update and have a nice discussion. Ashley?
So the farmer's market is back. We were gone for two weeks. That was a long time for us to be gone. I heard about it. So in the future, I'd like to see if we can, you know, minimize that over the holidays. The way the holidays fell this year, we had two Thursdays in a row where we had Christmas Eve and then New Year's Eve. So next year, the calendar should shake out a little differently. But I did hear about that, that second week in particular before New Year's, where's our farmer's market, which is wonderful. It means that we're doing a good job, that our market manager's doing a good job to the point where people are missing it. Now they have to go to the regular grocery store, which is, they're not happy about that. So, so farmer's market was back last week. I'm seeing more emails come through of people wanting to participate in our mark, our market, and I'm passing those along to our market manager so that he can vet people and, you know, see if it's a good fit for what we've got going on. Next month, I would like to have Raul and Nile come and talk to us about plans that they have for this year and ways that we can work with them. It's on my list for this month, and hopefully we'll have a really solid, in-depth update for you. I had a list out to them right before the holidays of things that I was looking at, things that I had gleaned from these meetings on our outreach to locals about what the farmer's market has to offer you and getting the word out about that more. Community group participation in our meetings on the regular, and then any other things that we can do. And of course, as always, well, not as always, hopefully for not much longer, we are constrained with what we can do by COVID. So we're still kind of stuck in terms of, you know, some of the bigger plans that I know our market manager had for, you know, music types of things or gathering types of things that hopefully we can do in the future. I don't want to lose those ideas. I know he's got great ideas. I know this group has ideas. But we'll see what we can do on a small scale for the rest of, you know, at least through the spring and into the summer. So that's what I have for, for farmer's market. Linda?
I've said this before, I'm so always enthused about our farmer's market and it just gets better. But a question, which I don't know where it falls in our agenda, but we had a listing of home crafters, vendors that was publicized, and we haven't gotten any feedback about, was that effective or anything about it? I don't know where we can talk about it today or if we can talk about it today.
We can agendize that for the next meeting. That would be a good thing to check the analytics to see how many people pinged our webpage. And then beyond that, it would just be Leslie and I, you know, for the inquiries that we had from, via email and telephone for requests for, for home crafters vendors. So I'll collate, I'll bring that back to the commission next month.
Shall we open up the farmer's market to public comments? Anyone? All right, hearing none. Any, any other commissioners want to speak about the farmer's market? All right, I think we're doing a great job. The vendors are doing a great job. I love the market. I miss the market like we all did at Astor Bread. You know, you have to go out of your way, especially during the holidays to get it. So it's much nicer having it in town. It's long, and yeah, we have so many good vendors, I'm, I'm over the moon about it. Yeah. Anybody else? All right. Here's the biggie for today, a preliminary discussion about the development of a citizens' academy to educate community members about participating in the civic process in Carmel.
All right. So this has come up at our previous meetings, even pre-pandemic, of what types of things is this community activities commission going to tackle? So goal two of our strategic plan states that we'll embrace opportunities, diversity of events and social gatherings to encourage community interactions. One of the things we heard when we did community conversations was small, people were looking for smaller events. They felt like we had a good handle on the large events. The, you know, the pumpkin roll, these things that draw crowds, not only locals, but also visitors to town specifically to participate in them, to go to our restaurants, you know, it's a good economic draw as well as community draw. But what are the smaller things that we can do to bring people together? So those are our objectives and to develop pilot programs for community events. One of the things that we have been talking about that has come up for us is the formation of some type of citizens' academy to guide people through, or, or a neighbor's type of program. They've kind of been intertwined and they've been intertwined in my mind, but what we're going to do today is just kind of separate those things out. Citizens' Academy would be specifically to help citizens, residents, business owners, whether they're new or not. Sometimes people live here for years and it's not until they, you know, hear, there's some sort of issue that comes up that piques their interest or affects them, and they want to participate in making their voice heard to the city council or to a board or commission. So how do they become an active part of the Carmel community and active participants in the city governance? So this, so I agendized the, the concept of citizens' academy to allow for us to start a preliminary discussion about what that would look like, what our goals are so we can clearly state those out, identify the parameters. So, you know, what would, would it be a series? Would it be reoccurring series? Would it, you know, what does this, what does this look like for an outline? Who do we think potential participants could be or hosts? And then I did reach out to our city clerk, Britt Avrit, because she is our expert in the civic process. She was the person who organized our Brown Act training for last week. She's, you know, kind of not the gatekeeper to the city council, but she's the best way to get, make sure that they get information if there's, you know, citizen comment. She runs those city council meetings. So she was on the call earlier, I did see that, but I don't see her any longer. But she and I had a conversation about this. She's fully in favor of this and will do whatever she can to support any sort of, you know, ideas that we come up with and will gladly work with us on that. So that being said, I will let you guys take it away. I have, of course, thoughts and ideas, but I want to hear from the commission on their feelings and ideas for a citizens' academy.
Linda?
I think it sounds great. I mean, I have not thought of it in this context, but it kind of underscores the things we've been talking about for the last few years and, and how do we impact community involvement? And we talked about recognizing new residents and, and doing something to address that. And so I think it's wonderful.
Donna?
When you were talking then, I was thinking about something similar that they did in England is to have on each block a connection, a blocked connection. And, and I think Dale has done a lot of that with getting people to take care of mediums in their area or corners. And I see people volunteering, working on a lot of the landscaping around town. They've adopted something. And the other night of Monday night specifically, as you know, our power went off. And I thought about some, some people who live alone and don't know what's happened. I called the police station because I have their number on dial and, and they, of course, had no information. And I called PG&E and I thought, wouldn't it be nice if there was somebody local who would say not to worry? I've checked on it or, because there normally for a lot of people, there isn't anybody. And so I think this might be adopt a block. And I thought about that with trash. Some areas are so full of trash and I thought maybe if people on that block picked up the trash when they were out walking their dog. And I think that's a good way to get community involvement. And somebody then, of course, would meet their neighbors if they even had one, one block, like eight houses, to knock on the door and say, hi, I live down the street. If, if there's any information I can share with you or if we have an outage or a disaster, if I'm here, I'll try to be helpful. So that's sort of what I thought about this. And whether it can happen or be worked into our plan, I'm not sure, but it's sort of an idea to adopt.
Nancy just put a comment in the box, and that is that the Carmel Neighbors, which was established at the start of the pandemic and was, I think Dale was a part of that initially with the CRA, they're a separate group, but they've been working on establishing exactly what you were talking about, Donna, which is block by block, building those neighbor connections. So that's already in process, which is super terrific. And I think that would be a good opportunity to have the leaders of Carmel Neighbors come and talk to us. That was spearheaded by council member Baron and former council member Ramers. And so I think that would be a good opportunity as we start to talk about citizens' academy to have them come talk. The neighbors program is a little bit different than citizens' academy. The citizens' academy, as I proposed it and were thinking about it, was a little more process and government oriented. Both things are good and both things go hand in hand because they're all about communication. How do we connect and communicate with each other? So I'm going to make a note here to reach out to Carmel Neighbors to have them come talk to us about where they are, what they've been working on, because I think that would be great and helpful to us as we move through our strategic plan.
Go ahead, again, Donna.
Well, I, I forgot to mention, I didn't know about this program, but someone I knew was a volunteer with the police department. And they, not the traffic kind, but they call elderly people and check in on them, particularly during this. And I didn't know if the police department still has that program. And I think if they do, many people don't know about it. Someone told me they were a volunteer. I gave her cookies one day and she said, I'll take them to the police department because I'm volunteering. So if that is still in operation, I think we, as a group, would like to know more about it because there might be someone who's interested in volunteering for that program and learning more about it and registering if they're a single senior who would like to have somebody check on them. Thanks.
Yes, that's the seniors helping seniors program. I'm making a note, I think they have put it on pause right now because they can't, we can't have volunteers. They were going to the police department. And Leslie, correct me if I'm wrong. So it may be on hold, but I've made a note to talk to the lead on that program. And that is on the, the seniors helping seniors is up on the city's website because it's been a longstanding program. But I'll make a note to see if we can get the community services officer in charge of that come talk to us about seniors helping seniors.
John?
Look, I, I think this is a great idea. It seems like awareness is one of the key words that comes to mind when we're talking about this program. There are so many different programs going on in our city. You know, one of the things we need to do is help people become aware that these actually exist. You know, there's Leadership Carmel that the chamber is running. There's, you know, a number of different programs. What I, what I don't want to see us do is recreate the wheel. I think we need to create leverage across our group's access to give the community, maybe it's monthly, maybe it's quarterly, a place where they can go tune in on Zoom or hopefully someday meet in person. And, you know, we can bring the resources to bear of this commission to that meeting and, and bring these groups together and create awareness. So whether it be a session on how does the city council work? A session on, you know, there are a bunch of different commissions in the city of Carmel. What do they do? How, if I'm interested, how do I get on one? Two, you know, how does the police department and the fire department and everyone function together? How, what does the city staff look like? You know, if I have an emergency, where can I go? You know, again, who, what are the resources within the community, within the neighborhoods? Who are the people that we should be reaching out to? I feel like, and we've talked a lot about over the, you know, years that I've been on this, talked a lot about how do we create a, a board where we can post all this information or a website where we can create awareness for the different goings on within the community? You know, if we had a consistent, like the farmer's market, a consistent event, again, timing to be determined or frequency to be determined, where people knew if I want to learn more about anything going on in Carmel, this is, this is the place I can go and I can actually, you know, and I can actually, you know, have this interactive experience and learn, you know, about the governance of the city of Carmel and how it functions and how I can get more involved. I think I'm, I'm all for that. I'd love to help in any way I can in, in thinking about facilitation. Again, importantly, I want to make sure that we're not redoubling efforts that are already, you know, being, being handled by other groups within the city. If anything, just bringing awareness to those groups and giving people kind of a, I don't know, in the tech world, they say kind of a double click ability, right? Our job should be to bring information and awareness. If any of our citizens want to double click and gain more information or go down that rabbit hole and learn more, we're just trying to give them direction, let them go from there and give them the access to the contacts and whoever's responsible for giving them kind of the detailed information in that area. I don't think we have the time nor the resources to go down each of those rabbit holes, but I do think we can be that broad based, you know, encyclopedia of information and goings on and then make sure that we're giving our citizens access to those resources or the contact information to learn more.
Exactly, John. You know, when I was running, one of the things I brought, I had brought this up to Ashley because when I was running for mayor, people didn't understand how the city worked. They didn't understand our commissions. They didn't understand how to get on them, like John was saying. They, they don't understand how to get their stuff to the city council. And some of, some of them didn't know where city hall was, you know, they'd moved here. They're used to living in big places where they're probably not engaged in their community, you know? And when you're here, we're so small, it gives everybody the opportunity to have their voice be heard. And that's what I'm kind of hoping for, something, you're right, John, we can't go down each rabbit hole and I don't think we should. And it's different than all these other organizations too that are doing good things because I was on the neighbor to neighbor group in the, in the beginning. So there's lots of groups out there. There's lots of things that can be done, but I think people don't even have an idea of where to start and that's where we need to help them, you know? This is how you do it. These are, these are some of your avenues you can go down. Maybe some people still don't know about the Friday letter. The Friday letter is awesome. There's lots of stuff out there and we just need to figure out a way to help people understand how to get there, where their resources are. And, you know, we might say the website, but maybe they're not used to in their cities being available to all, all that we can do for them. So.
We have, we have an incredible opportunity with the number of new residents, full time coming down to Carmel. You know, a, a lot of it is, is because of the beauty of this special place and a lot of it's driven in the last year by people being able to work from here, you know, versus having to be in the Bay Area and work remotely. I would be overjoyed to see new names and faces on our monthly, you know, Zooms or in person in city hall. I'd love to see, you know, a diverse group of people speaking at every city council meeting, you know, versus people who have historically shown up and spoken every time because that represents our broader community and, and what's going on in our town. So, you know, the more we can, I guarantee you, there are so many people who don't realize that, you know, unless they're on the Forest and Beach Commission or unless they're on the Community Activities Commission, you know, they're thinking they can't say anything or that's happening away from me. Rather, why don't you join us? You know, this call is open to everyone. I'd love to see, you know, I love the participation we have right now and I'm grateful to, to the folks who join us, but I'd love to see more of that going forward. It just makes our city stronger. And then when we have events that take place, we've had more input and ideally then we have, you know, a broader group of supporters behind those events.
Okay, so what I have from, from all of you is, is the goal, our goal, our main goal with, with any type of citizens academy would, I love that word, John, which is awareness. Bringing awareness to our community about how to, I think we would have different sessions. So how to interact with the city council would be one of them. Commissions, I think that's great. What do they do? How do you participate? What does that, what does that mean? A session on city departments and then a session on our civic groups and our community resources. And I think that this is something that we could probably in terms of timing, I mean, you could record these and save these forever. You could also, so that they're up all the time and you could also do a refresh. So do a spring session and a fall session, just like school, and then just replace them and refresh them and update them on, you know, what are the civic groups up to? Who are the new contact information people? Who is the best, you know, the best way to do this? And I think getting back to the website too is going to be another thing that I, I will need to work on in terms of bulking that up so that we can point that as a resource. But those are the four sessions that, that have come out of this discussion that I've identified. Did I miss, did I miss anything?
I think you pretty much covered it, Ashley.
Okay, so our goal is awareness and the sessions that we'd like to tackle are city council, commissions, city departments, and then civic groups and community resources.
And then if we come up with something else as we're going through this and say, oh, we forgot this, then we can just add it. But we have, that's a strong, that's a strong foundation to build from.
That's a, it is a strong foundation to build from. Okay. Now I think with, you know, city council and commissions and city departments, I mean, goodness, it's just a matter of probably setting a goal for scheduling and getting organized. We know who the players are. We know who our city council is. It's just a matter of getting participation and getting, having adequate time to give, get the word out and do this. So, um, let's see. Um, let me think about how we get started on this. Do a little sketch of a timeline.
I did have a question on the Friday letter because we've talked, you know, a, a number of times about getting people to subscribe to the Friday letter in, in various ways. So could you give us the information necessarily now on how many residents take the, the Friday letter? Do we, could we figure that out?
I don't think we could figure that out without doing a survey of all of the people who receive the Friday letter because it's not, it's, there's no indication of who's subscribed, I mean, based on their email where they're.
My concern about information on the farmer's market, which I love to do, is that there's just some people who those hours are just never going to work. So we will never, you know, run across them. So emphasis on the Friday letter, I would encourage getting, you know, as many people to sign up. And I just wanted to echo what John said about, you know, maximizing our effort and not recreating the wheel. I, I, you know, subscribe to that philosophy and I was remiss in not looking at that when I just said, yeah, let's start something new. I mean, I think we need to look at how, how do we maximize our effort? Thank you.
You know, Lynda just touched on something. She said, how many residents subscribe to the letter? But I don't think we should focus on just residents. I think that should be homeowners too, because as, you know, when I was first started here back in 2000, I was a second homeowner. But something like, and that's why I joined the CRA was because I wanted to know what was going on. Well, now that we have other areas and other ways to know what's going on, I think the Friday letter is a great way. Even if you're not a resident, you're a second homeowner, you want to know what's happening in your city. You want to know what's going on. And so that's a great way to do it. So not just resident, everybody.
And, and I totally agree with that. And I think there was a time when we use, because, because we also wanted to capture the, the, the people who are renting. So, so the term, I mean, is the term homeowners and renters? I mean, I don't know what term.
Yeah. Well, I think we had talked too about being more inclusive about the concept of community because the things we see in the Friday letter with public, you know, like some of the public works projects, those affect business owners as well. You know, they just got the new street sidewalk cleaner that was a, a gift of Carmel Cares. I mean, that's a, that's a huge deal for us and that makes an impact to our sidewalks. So I think it's not just for renters or full-time resident homeowners or second homeowners or it's for everybody who, you know, comes, it's for, I would say it's for me. I don't live here, but I'm here during the day for sure. So people who work here, people who own businesses and have workers. So I think it's an, an everybody letter.
Yeah. Okay, so Ashley, you're going to put a timeline and a.
I'm going to do a little sketch and see what this looks like and I'll bring it back to you guys for the next meeting for your input to see, because then we'll need to basically kind of build out for each of the sessions, and I may reach out to you individually or figure out how to do this, kind of lesson plans and agenda for each of these sessions because it's, it's not going to be, we'll need somebody to moderate a discussion. There'll be key points that we need to identify, you know, what, as we, as individuals who have participated in and watched council meetings and are familiar with how public appearances work in our town and, and all of that, what are the, what are the key points that we think are important for new residents to understand about participation and what questions do we think we should pose to council members or commissioners or city department heads on the best way to engage civilly in our, you know, civic business? So we'll start to flesh out lesson plans and timelines and things like that.
I think we should also, I mean, as a, as a, as probably a next discussion point in this, or as we, as we firm this up, we should also put aside some capital in our budget to make sure that we're advertising this in the pine cone.
Yes, very well. We need to do a, a strong advertising campaign for this, yes.
All right, great. Future agenda items? I know Donna submitted some by email.
Can we, do we have a, a public comment on that subject?
Oh, on the citizens academy? Sure. Sorry, I didn't know you were there, Dale. I'm glad to see you.
Yeah. You can't see me anymore? Anyway, I'm here. I've been listening. I'll just go ahead and do my other public comment because it sort of goes along with this anyway. And, and I've really got, I'll just get rid of all my comments at once here if I could.
Okay.
Okay. I'd first like to thank all of you for working diligently last year to make such a success out of it, given the challenging circumstances. Speaking for myself, Carmel Cares and Carmel Gives, I'd like to thank you for working together with us to establish productive partnerships that we plan on continuing this year and into the future. We have big clients for this year. I've been listening. I'll just go ahead and do my other public comment, it sort of goes along with this anyway, and, and I've really got, I'll just get rid of all my comments at once here if I could.
Hold on a second. I'm going to.
I wanted to make a public comment after Dale.
Okay, but Joe, can you please turn off the recording? In the background? Yes, please turn it off because we can't. Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Dale.
To establish productive partnerships that we plan on continuing this year and into the future.
Okay, go ahead, Dale.
All right, I think you got the first part right. We have big plans for this year and are looking for opportunities to work with you and other organizations to help us all achieve our mutual goals, many of which are in close alignment. One of those is a subject we've just been discussing. I've put a section on our website about city government, but have yet to build it out, that's on the Carmel Cares website. We sponsored scholarships for the Chamber's Leadership Program.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Dale.
And I've been tracking the program and think it's wonderful. At Carmel Cares, we're fortunate to be able to work behind the scenes with Public Works and it has been a great experience for all of us. I'm personally interested in Carmel Cares and Carmel Gives are also interested in working closely with you to make this happen and we're ready to start anytime you are. One of the things I've learned about the median minder program is that citizens wanted to help, but they just didn't know how. I feel like I'm telling Dorothy in the Wizard of Oz that they've always had the power to get back to Kansas, they just didn't know how. The program empowers them to take action and their neighbors with them and, and they're all coming out of their houses and doing some pretty amazing things, even in these times. We talked about trash earlier. In terms of trash, we're happy to announce that we've now built up our first Carmel Cares Pickup Posse Team, which is focused on scenic pathway. The volunteers commit to a day of the week, get a pickup claw, T-shirt and a Carmel Cares branded bucket. Bob is now pushing us to get a couple more teams going as soon as possible. It's a little challenging right now because we've been on pause mode because of the shutdown, but we're still organizing behind the scenes. Finally, before I close, I'd like to say that Carmel Gives Restaurant Grant Program has already delivered about 1,300 meals after we delivered another 800 to the Boys and Girls Club families on a previous program. However, we will be creating a large amount, meaning many thousands more fresh, hot and yummy meals. If any of you know of targets for that food or would like to assist me with this project, please email me at carmelgives@gmail.com as soon as possible. Thanks and keep up the good work, guys. This is pretty exciting what you are all doing together and I'm glad to be part of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
All right, Joe, are you still there? You'll need to unmute. Give her a few seconds. Give her a few seconds.
Okay, I'm unmuted, yes?
Yes, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say that the program with the police department is still going on, Lisa's a part of that. I'm one of the callers. I have people that I call for the Carmel Police Department for the shut-ins and I also do that for the Carmel Foundation. And one of the other things that I've done in the last five years that each new council person that has been elected, has been elected, I have had a meeting with them each time.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say that the program with. So I thank you, I'm sorry, I see that there's a delay with my hat and I don't want to, if I touch it, something's going to happen. So that's all I wanted to say. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe, for letting us know that, that program's still going on and thank you for your volunteering. Okay, Ashley, what are we adding to our future agenda items?
Well, I made a note at the top of my notes, beginning of the meeting, from announcements that we would be, no, I've forgotten. Well, for future agenda items, we have the, a presentation from our farmer's market manager. We will revisit citizens academy and start to flesh out what we think is important in terms of agenda for each of the different sessions. I think we, we should invite Carmel Neighbors or seniors helping seniors or both for that matter to come to talk to us, especially as we start to build out these agendas and think about our, the session that we'll do on civic groups and community resources. We'll do a quick strategic plan review. This is the end of our two-year plan and I didn't quite know how this would go since Community Activities Commission has never had a plan before. We can extend the plan out, we can scrap it and start to build one from scratch if we want to, it's up to us. So start to ponder that. I can share that strategic plan out with you all, so you can take a look at it. It's been in our packets before, but, but start to think about that we can keep it going, like I said, extend it out or start to build a new one.
Put it, send that out to us, Ashley.
I'll send that, yeah, I'll send that out to you. And.
And you had said leadership Carmel wanting to work with us.
Yes, leadership Carmel had offered Yvonne Bowen, who's participating in that and that is run by the Carmel Chamber of Commerce, to support us with any of these initiatives that we're doing. And so maybe we do some thinking about that as we look at our strategic plan, but also think about that in terms of if leadership Carmel can help us, you know, be another brain or mind in terms of building out our citizens academy, because goodness knows they have, will have ideas about what is important in this community as we've been going through. I know John participated in one of the sessions I did as well, so that is an opportunity for, for thinking about how we can partner with leadership Carmel for some of our initiatives. Because it's great, it's absolutely fantastic to have the groups that we're working with for all of us to want to work together to support each other. This is what we were going for.
Am I unmuted? Yeah, no.
Yep.
I had, the future items is I'm. I had, the future items is I'm interested, not concerned, but interested in all of the upcoming holidays and events in the village. And I wanted to talk about Valentine's Day because I think the city has begun during this pandemic to become engaged. People are still coming here on weekends and a lot of visitors and Airbnb people are everywhere. But the, I, Valentine's Day, and I had thought we could do something simple and possibly give free little hearts out or, you know, candy wrapped hearts or anything just to keep the momentum going that there is something happening at the farmer's market. And obviously, we don't want to do lights and that's been done and we can save that for bigger events. But one of the things I saw a, a town doing is red ribbons, big red ribbons around trees, you know, like 12 inches wide. And maybe even the farmer's market decorate red for Valentine's Day that people come and see, oh, look, this is kind of festive. So I just don't think we should let that and Mother's Day and Easter go without keeping something going on in the city that encourages people to, not encourages, but brings a little joy, something, a, a surprise. And the two events with the Poinsettis and the pumpkins was a huge surprise and people loved it. So even candy and the Carmel Chamber could get it away. We could have them sign up for the letter at a, the city's community table. And I would volunteer to help do that. Something simple, but yet be known. And then have a committee next month organized for all of the quote holidays for the year so we don't get a late start, even if it's as simple as putting it on the calendar.
Well, you know, this, this Valentine's, I think it's a huge weekend, right? It's not only Valentine's on Sunday, it is Chinese New Year. It's a long weekend because it's President's Day on that Monday. And I'm not sure, I was going to look it up real quick. I think it's AT&amp;T Pro-Am. I could be wrong, but, so even though they won't.
You're right, it's the Pro-Am and that, that's Sunday.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a huge weekend. There'll be massive amounts of people here, even though spectators aren't allowed at the Pro-Am. As they, as they posted in the pine cone, trying to get ads, everybody will be here. The golfers will be here, people will be here trying to see the golfers, you know? So town is going to be packed. It's going to be a busy weekend and, yeah, I don't know if we want to do something for that. We don't have much time. If we, if we did, we would have to like put, have a, have another meeting before our next meeting because then it would be like almost too late, so.
So that, that's another question. So I think we should, that, that's a good conversation to have with our farmer's market manager because I think there are some things that we, as Donna said, we could ask some of our civic groups if they want to participate in the market and, you know, hand out shamrocks for St. Patrick's Day or, you know, something like that as they promote whatever they have going on. Last February, it was just as our new market manager was starting, they started at the end of January, they did a Valentine's card making type of booth. There's a lot of touching with that going on now, but I think that we can turn to our market manager for some of these types of things to say, hey, what ideas do you have? Do you have a special vendor that you want to bring in for this? Or do you have a vendor already who, you know, you want to point to as a promotion type of thing for Mother's Day or something like that? So I think there's some opportunity there. So community groups, so it's not just all of us. With this group, we previously were meeting, you know, at the start of the pandemic, like every week. Then we moved to bi-monthly over the holidays. I think we just met once early in December. Do we want to shift back to once monthly meetings? Do we want to meet twice a month because some of these things are timely? So that was on my list of things to ask this, this commission for this meeting as we talk about our future agendas.
Two times a month. Bi-weekly. I, I, I think that once a week is a.
It's a lot.
Yeah, but I think twice a month, even if it's for 20 minutes because with the, with Google Zoom, most of us can always make it. I mean, it's unusual that we wouldn't be able to. But I would think twice a month would be helpful to keep us engaged and keep us helping the farmer's market and, and getting like the chamber to collaborate and with the market and with the community, so.
I'm okay with that. Thoughts from other commissioners?
Twice a month is.
And we'll focus, I mean, on the heavy duty. I'll, I'll try to focus, the, the heavy duty regular items will stay on our regular meetings. So the approval of our minutes, all of our announcements, the special meetings that we have in between those will really be for those things that are timely, like Donna brought up with our St. Patrick's Day, like what is upcoming that we need to talk about in order to support our regular meetings? So we'll try to keep those in-between meetings short and sweet.
Linda?
Ashley, don't forget on our next meeting to give us some kind of a report on the home crafters listing. Thank you.
That was, yes. So shall we schedule a meeting for the 26th of January?
That works for me.
Donna, John, Ellen?
I already have it on my calendar.
All right. Anybody, anything else before we close our meeting? All right, thank you. It was a very productive meeting. And, oh, Ashley, what time shall we meet? Shall we all like run out the door now or to come undecorate the park?
We're going to, Leslie and I are going to let the public works, we have two public works crew that are going to be helping us. So we'll let them know that we're ready to go. So, you know, 15 minutes.
Okay.
Get your shoes on, brush your hair.
See you all at the park.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you, bye.